Called the Halifax Board of Selectmen Tuesday, July 27th, 2021, 6:30 meeting to order. The meeting is being taped by Area 58 and also simulcast out through our Zoom account. First up, we have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to imply the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There any changes to the agenda or you're all set to move forward with that?
A motion to approve the agenda.
I don't have no changes. Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. All right, first off, we have regular selectman session, May 20th, May 27th, June 1st, June 4th, July 20th. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous? Okay.
I move to affirm approval of the following warrants and commitments. Vendor warrant number 137 for $11,585.99. Payroll warrant number 6 for $230,685.54. Vendor warrant number 7 for $237,834.16. Withholding warrant number 8 for $78,577.46. Ambulance commitment from 7/5 to 7/11 for $72,248.89. And ambulance commitment from 7/12 to 7/18 for $30,529.86.
I'll second move.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain. Two, zero, one.
I move to approve the following warrant. Vendor warrant number 9 for $238,689.3.
Just for a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
I abstain, so two, zero, one.
I move to approve payment of the following selectmen bills. From the selectman expense account, $173.47 for WB Mason. And the town hall electricity for $1,284.79.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. So just before we hand it over to Charlie, I just wanted to read the note that we got to the, from Joe Schofield, to the Board of Selectmen, just a note to thank you all for allowing the Council on Aging Board to participate in the selection of a new director. This action was a first in Halifax and a positive step in the right direction. Charlie?
Sure. You have a road opening for 43 Home Street to abandon an inactive gas service at the main.
Is that it? Is the police detail moving?
Says one police detail and building inspector comments are transparent.
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
I second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Zoning bylaw review project contract. If the board wants to ask for amendments to the contract, I need the proposed changes so I can send them to Attorney Bobrowski, or the board can approve and sign the contract. I did talk with the Finance Committee last night about this. They're welcoming other boards, committees, and town officials to participate in this project with the intention that the work on reviewing and revising the bylaw moves ahead.
So the concerns that I have is I've attended the Finance Committee meetings. They've basically said that they don't have the expertise to move forward with the zoning bylaw changes, and they're not getting the participation at that meeting. So I think we should consider revamping the bylaw subcommittee and assigning them to work on this task with Attorney Bobrowski. It says upon the completion of five meetings of the first draft of the recodified zoning bylaw, the attorney's going to request a payment of $22,500. So so far, we've had two meetings, and basically, it's Attorney Bobrowski giving his update on what he sees are things that we could do differently. It's not really the committee telling him what they want to see move forward for the town, and I think that's a mistake. So I think we should have the zoning bylaw committee reappointed and ask him to work with them.
That's up to the board, yeah.
Because as it's going right now, there's really no direction from the Finance Committee on zoning issues.
I agree. I couldn't make last night's meeting, but I was at the previous one and...
Just a reminder, folks, the mics, you either have to speak loud or the mic has to be near you. We had problems two weeks ago.
I think it would be a great idea to put that subcommittee back together and put more people responsible for that.
And who would you put on that committee?
Definitely somebody from zoning and planning.
With the board?
Residents. What would, who was on the committee before? How did we go?
We had, I believe, a member of zoning, a member of planning, we had a member of the selectmen, we had a building inspector, I think we had maybe one or two members at large. On one note, I don't know that it matters, but I know obviously a number of people opposed this project at town meeting back in September. I'm not quite sure that it would be normal to have people who oppose the project, who voted against it, to be on the same committee that actually is trying to get the work done.
Well, except for the fact that those are the people that you need to get buy-in to get two-thirds of a vote.
Agreed, but nevertheless.
So if you're gonna redo zoning bylaws, then you should have people on there that have an interest in making sure that what they feel needs to be in there is in there.
But my problem with that is that if you put in people who didn't want the project in the first place, what's preventing them from sabotaging the project?
Well, there's other members on the board that would be the checks and balance from not leaving it up to individuals.
The Finance Committee does not have the expertise to move forward with this project. So moving forward, it needs to be changed.
It's up to the board to make that decision.
I'm not gonna take comment right now. We're gonna talk as a board.
I just want to fill that. If we're gonna put people on there, who's got the experience to change the bylaw? We got any history of anybody changing? So even if you put large people on board, you've gotta have some kind of expertise in bylaw changes.
We will. We'll have the attorney, and then we'll have people from different boards to be able to help that with residents. This is part of what this town needs. We need more people being involved, having a voice, being able to be a part of the changes happening here, and this is how we do that.
It's not gonna fly with the Finance Committee running the show because they don't have the expertise, and they've said that in the meetings.
I've sat on a meeting where I've heard that, so I agree with doing the subcommittee. And then we know those people are accountable, and they're showing up, and we're paying a lawyer to be here with people who are gonna take this seriously, not show up to a Finance Committee and let's see if planning shows up, let's see if zoning shows up. They didn't even have meetings posted. We need to take this a little bit more seriously if we're gonna put this type of money that the taxpayers are paying into an attorney to change a bylaw. That's all important stuff.
If people are gonna show up, that would be great, but the last iteration of the zoning bylaw committee, there were evenings I was here in the building waiting for people to show up. People would show up in the parking lot, never even come in the house.
Well, I think that that's the past, and we have to move forward. The town voted to spend the money to have the zoning bylaws redone. I can't see putting the Finance Committee in charge of this where they don't have the expertise. And if it's gonna get shot down, it's gonna be a waste of money.
Isn't that what we have to announce here?
So...
For expertise, we're paying somebody to change the bylaws. Hopefully, we looked at the expertise he had in doing that.
But he's not supposed to be dictating what the town's bylaws are. He has his view of what bylaws should be. It doesn't mean that that matches what the residents of the town have.
Then why did we hear?
Who picked him?
The Finance Committee did.
So the Finance Committee, who have openly said that they don't have expertise in this, picked this attorney.
Yes.
Which is why we need more people involved.
I would like to put on the agenda for the August 10th meeting.
To what?
To appoint people to the zoning bylaw committee.
Is that a motion, Gordon?
I'll make the motion.
I second.
Is there a second?
Abstain.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Troy, you abstain?
Yeah.
All right, next up, we have material recovery facility legislation. That was a carryover item.
So I don't know if the, you know, the board had the information a couple of weeks ago. I don't know if the board wants to contact the town's legislative delegation at all about, or just wants basically offer no opinion and we'll just leave it alone.
How does not move affect that?
The idea is that the materials recovery facilities would have to provide more transparency about the percentages of materials that they're getting in, and then how the prices are determined for our tipping fees and everybody else's tipping fees. So it probably a more honest bill is what it comes down to when we're having to pay the tipping fees.
And where is it in the legislature now?
I believe it's sitting in the House right now. We had a hearing a couple of weeks ago.
Well, I see no harm in notifying our legislators, our constituents on it. I'm not sure we have noticed what we feel about that yet.
So was that a motion to contact them, or do you want to talk to them when we meet with them about it?
Well, the motion to contact, I'm putting it in writing.
I second.
To support the bill. Troy?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous?
I believe you have copies of the Municipal School Building Committee's monthly status report. I know, I believe Scott or someone from the Building Committee will be here for the department head meeting, so if you have questions about specific projects, don't opportunity to ask away.
So we have a six...
Sorry, Gordon, do we have a 6:35?
Yeah, we have a 6:35 appointment with David and Linda Tenoli. Mr. Tenoli, would you mind just coming up to the mic?
How are you, sir?
How you doing?
So you have a request for a live entertainment permit?
Yes.
And that is three to nine. Looking for the date.
August 14th.
August 14th?
Yep.
Okay. You've already checked in with the fire chief, police chief, and board of health?
Yep.
No detail needed. Does the board have any questions?
I have a lot of cars there. We got plenty of parking.
Yeah, I don't know if you've ever been down Franklin Street? You ever see the guy that parks out? You ever see the road driveway that goes behind my house? Well, he's my friend. He's got parking for 100 cars back there.
Sir, okay.
Yep. And I did get, I got liability insurance to cover myself. So I got a million dollars liability, plus the person who's doing the catering has a million dollars liability for the bar, so covered.
You're gonna have food, I would imagine, not just music and drinks?
Food, yep, yep. Everything catered.
And our invitations are in the mail.
Excuse me?
Our invitations, you have them.
Your invitation. Swing by, probably. It's gonna be a lot of people.
I see no reason not to give it to them.
I agree.
Is it a motion?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of approval?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, unanimous, thank you very much.
Have fun. Stay safe.
Ambulance payments for June 2021, $110,001,218.
Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous?
We've got cemetery, two events assigned. Use of the town green, congregation church would like to use it for its church service, annual blessing of the pets church service on August 22nd in the morning. Any kind of plea? Nope. I move it.
Is there a second?
I second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
And then similarly, they would like to use the town green on Saturday, September 11th for their flea market.
Is there conflicts there?
Nope.
Is there a motion?
Move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Paul Nixon, who you met with a couple of weeks ago about the one-day liquor licenses for Fieldstone Show Park, asked if the board canceled the permits. It appears that there was a breakdown in communication with the event organizers. I do recommend notifying the event organizers that if any alcohol is to be served, that a permit still will be needed.
Okay. Is there a motion to withdraw?
Moved.
Rescind of all we took.
So was it a rescind, an approval, or how do you do that with?
We approved it, we gotta rescind.
Either rescind it, or, yeah, rescind would be fine.
Okay. Cause Pam had contacted the ABCC, so I didn't know if rescind is... Okay, Troy made the motion to rescind. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous?
The Council on Aging has had a men's coffee group for several years, and now they've also organized a women's coffee group, and we just received a note with the Council on Aging invite Officer Cushman to their August 4th session. It's great that now that, you know, there are more activities happening. We obviously have a new Council on Aging director, and she's moving as well as she can to get things moving, you know, down, moving again after we're back in the pandemic a little bit. But I'm trying to get more events organized with more participants from more parts of Halifax, so this is great. But obviously, the board wants to go, that's fine, too. I assume they're gonna have it up in the big tent.
Okay.
She's in the room.
Do you want to speak to it?
Actually, what it is is that we...
Do you want to come up to the microphone so that everyone on Zoom can hear? Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening. Yeah, so we actually included the women's group. I was approached by one of the members in our organization, and they asked if, in fact, we could create a women's group, and I said yes, of course. So that's what we did in order to increase the awareness of the COA. What has been difficult, of course, is the being able to find the resources to hold the events. We have so much energy here, tons of energy, and I want to be able to, I don't want to squash that energy. I want to create more programs. So we were very fortunate to have Officer Cushman back because after a year, you know, we weren't able to accommodate or the opening of having him there at the meeting. So it was nice to have him there, both with the men's and when I asked for the invitation to be extended to the women's group as well. So hopefully, that'll happen, and I want to thank him for that. So we're, the community is very supportive of one another, and you don't see that often. So I don't want to squash that, so...
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Printing of the town report. We've now gotten all the reports in from all the departments. The plan is to print 10 copies, other report than buying them for the various archives, such as the town clerk's office, the vault, state library, Holmes Public Library, and the museum. As with previous town reports, the 2020 town report will be available online, so anyone interested can print out a copy. There's about $100 available left in the line item for binding costs, and Pam's gonna be checking, we've reprinted today for pricing for the binding. This is obviously gonna be fewer copies than we printed before, but we were spending a couple thousand dollars printing maybe 75 or 100 copies. And, you know, the information, the report will still be available, and we'll, even if somebody needs one, we'll print it out. It won't be a problem. Town Facebook page, it's on the agenda for discussion, and I assume, you know, you'll be working out how to staff it and what policies you're gonna follow.
So this has come up before. What's the board's pleasure on creating a page and policies and posting to it?
Well, you want to open this, that's one way of doing it.
I'm sorry, Troy, I didn't get...
You want to open this, open this, so this way of letting people know what's going on, they want to take the time to read it. And on the town reports, I find more of those now at the post office on the counter than I do seeing people's hands, so it's a choice. I think we ought to provide it so that people at least have an opportunity to voice their opinion on it.
If you're going to do that, I don't know whether you're gonna have then someone moderate comments because you're gonna start getting into First Amendment problems. If you don't allow any comments at all, then you don't have that problem. If you're just simply putting information up, posting from various departments, that's certainly feasible. But if you're going to start allowing comments, then you're gonna deal with the consequences of having to moderate those comments unless you're gonna just allow free-for-all.
So I think posting onto Facebook to share information is good. I think it creates issues if you're gonna have more than one person comment back because if two members of a three-member board comment, that's a violation of open meeting law.
Not so much that I'm worried about. I'm more worried about if you're gonna allow comments from the general public, or this doesn't mean Halifax residents. Obviously, as we see with the private Facebook groups, plenty of people are interested in Halifax that aren't residents. But if you open up to comments to everybody, you're either going to do a free-for-all, let anything go because you can't pick and choose, or you're gonna have to moderate, and then you're gonna have to figure out which rules are you gonna follow. And you're gonna run, and we're town government, not a private person, and you're gonna run into First Amendment problems moderating comments because then someone's going to make a judgment call each time a comment is up, whether that's an acceptable comment or not.
I don't, I think the point of the Facebook page is so that we are putting information out there, meetings, hearings, things going on in the town, and get more people involved in the town. I don't necessarily think that comments need to be turned on, but I do believe that we should let messages be received, and that way whoever's running the page can put those to the proper channels if there needs to be a response from a specific board because we definitely don't want to make it seem like we're not being responsive. I also think it's important on this page to give everybody the proper emails and who's on what boards and who you can contact if there's something you want to talk about.
So are we just going to, so if we post something to the website, like a hearing coming up, we're just gonna post it to Facebook as well?
I mean, Charlie posts to the other two pages all the time.
Right.
I think it would be important to have a specific town page to post those things on in a more positive way and to get a lot of message out there.
So what we've been doing all along is posting on the keys in front of the fire station, we can put it in the newspaper, and it's on channel 58, 58 taping. You think Facebook will help?
Yes, it's 2021, I feel like everybody's on Facebook, and I'm not saying we're gonna post. We have to decide what we want to post. We should be posting when meetings are. We should be posting agendas. We should be letting people see what's being talked about here so they can decide if they want to come to a meeting, if they want to have some sort of input or say or send an email in and have a voice. I think that's the biggest part of this. I think if it's an informative Facebook page that is just getting information to our residents about what is going on in this building and in this town and all of our town buildings, that's what we should be doing.
So...
Gordon, you want to shut that door? Or get...
I think we need to have a policy in place before we move forward with it. So maybe we could talk to Brooks and Durentis and see if they have a social media policy that they could recommend to us that we can vote on at the next meeting.
Okay. So can we move it to the next agenda?
Is that acceptable with the board?
It's fine, I agree.
Yep.
Okay.
LED streetlight discussion, I, when I went and typed this up, I had heard from Steve. Steve is interested in fact in the idea of having Ingrid install those new streetlights. And I can go back, look at the cost and everything, bring back the firm proposal from Ingrid. I'll do that, I'll do that for the board. Oh, sorry, the town. MBTA advisory board, the board's looking for confirmation as to whether selectman intrus or someone else that the selectman designated as the town's representative. Does the board want?
We could continue representing you only there, right?
I haven't been the MBTA. I can, but I wasn't before.
I move it.
My second.
Representative.
Okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Police chief had sent a letter of commendation for Officer Hinks. He had dealt with a very difficult situation involving a resident here in Halifax. It could have been a far worse situation in sense of altercations and such, and Officer Hinks was able to diffuse the situation and help both the individual and the family. I'm not gonna go and mention the person's name just for privacy, but the chief wanted to make sure that the public was aware of Officer Hinks' work.
Should we present a letter to congratulate on his efforts?
Yes.
We'll do that. FEMA validation map changes, we did receive a letter from FEMA confirming the changes made in the town's floodplains in connection with the specific properties. There's a list attached to the letter, and a copy was received in the building inspector's office, and no actions needed by the board concerning that. Current Brothers Oil, there was a petition, but what we got from the petitioner, Karen Faber, with a number of signatures, was basically a series of blurry photographs. I did contact Ms. Faber and mention, you know, if we could get the full-size copies, that would be fine. I haven't heard anything back. It appears that the petition was related to either that the property was in or near the historic district, it's not in the historic district, it's on the border. I know there's a sign near the property, on the property, but it represents, the sign represents where the district starts, not that the property itself is in the district. There's no action to take, there's nothing before the board, but we received his correspondence and thought the board should be aware of it.
Did you receive a letter from John Shea?
Yeah, that's why I'm mentioning that it's not in the district. Traffic signs safety account, this is a file for the traffic safety committee's discussion. I didn't know if the board wants to set up a new line item as part of September 8th special town meeting or wait to propose it for the May 9th 2022 annual town meeting. Neither case would need to establish who has jurisdiction and what the costs of that are.
I talked to Steve a little bit about this at our meeting. I think the thought was that we're gonna try to get it on the September 8th, was the feeling I had. There was still some working out of the details and being able to present it properly and give the townspeople all the details as to why and what that would include and all that.
I'll get back in top of Steve during the next couple of weeks before we get to water stuff. And you have a seven o'clock appointment.
All right, so it's seven o'clock and we have a water system discussion with the water commissioners and the board of health. Ms. Sims?
You want to come up?
Can you say if there are upstairs?
The water commissioner said they were coming?
I believe they said or decreed.
They're locking in the building now. You guys want to come up? So we. Thank you. So we asked the water commissioners and the board of health to come to our meeting to talk about issues with the town's water supply. Ms. Sims came to our meeting and presented some pictures and talked about some of the issues that she's having at her residence. The amount of water that she's trying to flush through the system. Would you guys be able to give us an update on what's going on with the water system in town and why some of our residents are having groundwater complaints?
I know that specific development that she lives in is because of basically the water mains in. It's an eight-inch water main going in, two-inch mains coming off and a dead end. And the building maintenance company was supposed to put in leaves because we can't go in and flush. And they haven't been doing, they're flushing like this also, I think they flushed once in place in June and that was it. And that's contributed to some of the problems.
So what, I guess the first question is that a number of people have asked, is the water safe?
Yes.
Yes. It gets tested every month.
So I have a question, if it's happening in the condos and it's our system, then why is it happening in other places like South Street, Twin Lakes, Mont Ponsett Street? I'm not, it's not just White and Lane, and that's what I've been hearing. And I am now on the board in the condos and we have been flushing more regularly.
How often would you like it?
We're flushing quarterly now, or is it?
Quarterly, since June.
So how often would you like us to be flushing?
Has it been done this month or just June the last time?
I believe it was June, and I think leaders were installed.
Yeah.
Yeah, so everything's getting flushed.
But to just keep blaming it on the condos is, and I understand maybe we do have a faulty system and it's not up to par. But I think the town must have said that that was okay back in the day when the condos were built, which means the town thought that they could give us clean water.
I'm explaining it all to condos, we've found, to tell you the truth, I don't think we have been doing our job in the past as we should as a flushing. We have a superintendent here now, he's only been on the job three weeks.
Yes, and thank you, I'm not mad at you, I promise.
We have, we know that there's a big problem with flushing, we're going to correct that. We're doing work on the tank, he's actually going to call some, some people tomorrow, the tank is going to be cleaned. We have, we have contracts with engineers who work both on the treatment plant and the filtration plant. That got delayed a little bit because of COVID and for other reasons, but I believe, Bill said it's supposed to come in Monday and start working on all those problems. We know what the problems are, the water mistake and we're dealing with the problems as fast as we can do it. We don't want dirty water, we want clean water. Like we've got condos, part of the problem, if you people weren't doing it right, part of the problem is we weren't doing it right.
Thank you for taking some ownership, because the last superintendent constantly blamed my personal condo and the condos in general. So thank you.
No, I think we have to take part of the plan and we will take part of the plan, go to work on it directly, and I hope you people work to correct it too. We may be struggling all that. But every weekend with the tank and the treatment plant and the filtration plant to take care of these problems.
So I guess one of, one of the things I think the residents should know about is, what is the current well setup right now? We have two wells?
Four.
Four wells, are they all being filtered right now?
No.
Okay.
Two.
So are we getting a lot of magnesium and iron into the system because we're not filtering two out of the four?
The two that aren't being filtered don't require it, they're made down the road, they might require it, but right now, the magnesium and the iron is, is all the limits that, you know, the state is requiring. Someday we might come back and even say we're going to need a lot of money to build enough filtration plant. I hope it's not in my lifetime, it's, it's going to happen, yeah. And the other two wells that we're complying with, have been filtered, does a company come in Monday, Monday morning? It was going to start upgrading that, and we're upgrading both of them, but only two, only two of the wells now are complying with it.
Is it something we can do? Can we filter the other two?
No, we'll spend one hell of a lot of money.
So.
There's no need to do it now because the iron and the magnesium are below what the state says we can put out, they're very low.
So I, I know that somebody had posted a copy of their water testing they had gotten, it sent out the water, it sent it out. It was high in iron and high in magnesiums. So that's, that's the end result that's ending up to the residents. And I guess the number of times that you see issues with the water and people taking pitches and people sending it in, I think the reason why the board asked everyone to come in is because it's a constant thing. And the residents didn't feel like they were getting answers from it. So one of the biggest things that, that we have from the Opera money is the availability to spend some of that money on the water system. So if there's upgrades that you guys have been holding off on because we didn't have the funds associated with it.
No, we don't hold off any. We hired this engineering company a while ago. We went to town meeting, get the money approved to do it, we signed a contract with them, and you probably signed half the contract. And we're trying to get them in, and now they're telling us they got delayed, they're telling us they'll need the money one, and then we'll go from there.
So my concern about what you said previously is hopefully one day we won't have to turn around and filter those, it's going to cost us a lot of money. But, or to redo the whole system. I guess my concern is I feel like a lot in Halifax is we kind of just let things fail. And then we pick up the pieces really quick to try to spend a whole bunch of money that maybe we could have maintained it along the way and not been hit with this at town meetings and not be hit with all these big fees. Is there anything we can do with those two wells in the meantime as more of a maintenance to make sure we don't get to that point? And maybe it would also even out by helping with some of these levels? Or are we just going to cross our fingers, hope for the best, and when it fails, tell all these people, sorry about your groundwater, and now we need all your money to fix the two wells?
The company's coming in Monday morning to start working on the, on the two wells that we need to work on. The other two wells are no problem.
Yeah, they're not, they're not a problem yet.
Like can we do something preventative?
Right, they're not a problem yet.
We were actually putting, when they come to clean the tank, the company, they gave us a quote to clean the tank, also recommended installing a mix-up, which is almost like a big fan that hangs in the middle of the tank and keeps the water circulating so that mammals don't gather and get spread out throughout the system. So we're going to go ahead with that too, so that will also.
Now is that something that you guys have the funding for or you're going to hold off on because that goes back to?
Let's get them down on the clean the tank, yeah.
I think those are important things for the residents to know, not we know we have problems, we're working on them. They want to know how you're working on them and where their tax money is being spent when they're still looking at groundwater. Just a little more detail, I think, makes everyone feel a little better and not like things are being hidden or not transparent.
Does that unfiltered tank service the condos, do we know?
All, all four wells service the entire town.
So it's not like split up part of the town?
Amy?
When was the last time Richmond Park well was actually filtered and all magnesium and iron was removed? Because I heard that we used to do it and stopped because we couldn't dump it behind here. Hold on, let me finish, so the DEP doesn't allow us to dump it back there anymore, so when was the last time?
We filter every day, three hundred seventy-five.
No, the, the actual whole intent.
The boom.
Yep.
Right, because there's nothing, there's nothing to do with the water going out into the system. That, that's the iron and magnesium we collect down there, it's in pits and we collect.
That's just filtered out.
We used to actually filter, we used to actually empty them so that we filter better. But when the last, my question is, when is the last time?
It has nothing to do with the filtration.
My question is, when is the last time?
So.
We put it again a little point out.
You have that in writing? I'd like to see those records because I was told that it hasn't been done in years.
You're talking two different things, you're talking, you're talking, we're talking about the filtered water that's going into the system.
I'm just asking the question.
I'm trying to give you an answer, you're talking about when we backwash the filters, the dirt that we collect out of the filters and it's just stored. I don't see what that has to do with any of the problems we're having here, there's a big pit that holds dirt.
I'm just asking because I heard that it was something that was affecting our water.
No, no, I didn't know. You can't, you're not even, you're not even connected.
Do you know the date?
It's, it's just like, it's just like when you backwash a pool. When you backwash a pool, you, you backwash the dirty water, that dirty water comes out of the filter, that's exactly what we do down there.
I would like a date, please.
I don't have it now.
Kim?
I have two questions. Well, the question and the statement, my first one, the question is, I'm an associate member of conservation. I'm just curious with the water act and under chapter one forty-six, if conservation in the future should be involved in any more joint meetings? And that's more of an educated newbie over there question, as a soon-to-be full member. And my second statement is, as a resident, I'm at six sixty-eight Fulton Street, we do call the water department. But for the past six months, we've had no better water quality than hydrated pee yellow. And I'm excited when it's hydrated pee yellow because at least we can shower and things. And it's not such a threat to our heating systems, our washing machines, the dishwasher and other things. But we still have to cope with bottled water, the animal strainer water and such like that because we don't feel as residents as if the water's one hundred percent. And it gets a little costly to test as a resident every day during the pandemic.
I have a question about the location of these. So just from what I've gathered from people in town, it seems like a lot of it seems to be like older areas of Halifax. Would that have anything to do with this at all, like older pipes or?
I don't think so because the water's all the same, some of it might be.
Well, like if you look at this, this looks like, like it almost looks like rust settling on the bottom. So it just makes me think like, is it an older pipe than like say Franklin Street has?
I don't get that, your neighborhood was like.
It is, it's.
But like I said before, part of the problem, as we know, was flushing has not been done correctly. We have worked on that problem, he's, that's his job, take care of that. And I think once that, when he's not doing it the way we used to do it, a lot of these problems going away. If you don't flush properly, that's what you're going to get.
So how long do you think that's going to take for them to see a significant change in their water?
Then they're starting to flush it.
And when is that?
I don't know, it's just one of the kind of group things, it depends on his job, whatever he can come up with. That's, he's the superintendent, it's up to him to get, to get the flushing and when we can do it. We don't want to flush now, not this, not this weather, we won't have the water to do it. We need a lot, we need a lot of water to flush properly, and if we flush now, we're going to destroy the tank. So we're going to make the tank clean first. And then he can schedule flushing, we'll do a proper flushing job, and I think ninety percent of these problems are going to go away.
So what do you recommend the proper flushing maintenance is scheduled is for a closed system like in the condos? Is quarterly sufficient?
I think quarterly is sufficient if the problem is getting better, and I told, I told them last time I met with them, you know, if it's not, then you can do it more frequently until the problem gets better.
Because it was done at the beginning of June, and so Casey, back to your water today?
So this was my water yesterday, this was a neighbor's, my parents also live in the condos, this is their water from like a week ago. And I've sent three emails since our last meeting two weeks ago.
So we haven't even met the next quarterly time that we're supposed to flush and there's still issues?
It's, it's constant, like if, if I can get this color for my child's bath, I'm like okay with that, and that's disappointing.
So is there a way to flush any of those lines that are deadheaded?
They put the yard higgs and then maybe two-inch higgs that are bigger than the lines they have in and out, but there's no big higgs in there. Not with, you know, a dead end, it could go to a dead end in back of buildings, that's what happens.
Have you been out to the condos to see the people with the hand reached building?
But I mean, you don't have to speak, I would imagine if you found that the water was getting worse or not as good, you'd flush five weekly or monthly instead of quarterly.
But if we're flushing, we're doing the quarterly and you're not doing it on your end, how do we, how do we justify that it's ours?
If the water outside of your neighborhood is clean, when you flush, it's going to pull the clean water in. Instead of it should dead end, and if you're not home all day, or people in your building, I'm home all the time, and the water just sits and the man is going to say, well, when you come home and turn your water on, you get to turn your water on, it picks all the magnesium stuff up and all that type. And since it's only two-inch main, there's not a lot of room in there.
Right, but we have residents from all over the town saying they have the same issue, so it's not just their neighborhood.
That's why we think cleaning the tank is going to help because if it is coming out of the tank and it's just a.
When's the last time the tank was cleaned?
Fifteen, it's only eighteen.
That's awesome.
So it's kind of wild.
So they, they repainted it to. Yeah.
And when is it getting cleaned again? I'm sorry, I know you said it, I just want to hear it again.
I just got a call yesterday, so I have to call that and set up time.
And how often should it be flushed?
How, no, how often should it be cleaned?
I don't know, I think every five days.
So I think another one of the issues the residents brought up is they're being told to basically just run their water. And basically they're being asked to pay for water that they know that they can't use because they're trying to flush the system.
And that was the prior superintendent, and that was his solution to the problem, which I just did not understand. Like if I'm supposed to fill, say a tub, or I have a blow-up pool that my son uses from time to time, and that's three hundred and seven gallons. And he would say, just use the water until it's clean. So I fill three hundred and seven gallons, dump it out, I once did it two times, I had two of the same pool. So six hundred and fourteen gallons of water that I used and then let out and then filled again, so we're talking over twelve hundred gallons of water.
Does it get better when you do that?
Maybe a little bit.
But nothing so significant?
No, like we were still swimming in yellow water yesterday.
So i- is there a way to work out a program where everybody in a certain building basically works with you guys and flushes out their internal system or the external spigot? That everybody in a, in a building on a certain day and you just walk around or a certain hour that you guys work with them on to not only just do the bleeders, but the water that's going inside their buildings too? No, well, I, I'm asking you, because it. No, well, I, I'm asking you, because if we're telling everybody that the water, you've got to flush the water and you've got to pay for it and the water's sitting outside, it's.
If they're flushing through the bleeders, they're not paying for it.
No, no, no. But, but it's, right now, they're, they're flushing through their house. Right? So they've got to pay for the water to come in that they can't use. And we're telling them they gotta flush the water in order to use it.
We're not telling them that. Your superintendent, we're not saying that at all.
So I think this is important.
What I would say to them is, because they have dirty water, they may have to flush their hot water tanks out because of our business. The water tank acts like that thing. The water fills the hawthorn and then we use this, which is fair up there, and you get it.
I, I mean, I, I get that aspect, but the aspect, like she's filling up a pool outside.
It's coming out of a hose. It's not even going from the hot water.
So I mean, the wa- the water coming out through her building.
Trying to protect her between, but sometimes when people see that there's dirty water, it's coming from the hot water.
Why, I mean, that, that's, I mean, the pictures she showed are definitely not coming from the hot water. I, I get that everyone, we, we should probably tell the residents, if you get a hot water heater, you should flush it once, once a year or twice a year. Make sure that all the sediment is removed. But I think the issue that we're seeing is not from hot water tanks. It's from the cold water that's coming through. I think the, the residents want to know, is there a solution that we can work on so that if, if everybody in her building flushes, you know, runs their outside spigot for a half an hour or whatever the program is, to try to get some of that settlement out of the, out of their dead end line?
Are you willing to go out and look at the condos and see what's going on over there?
Yeah.
I think it's phenomenal that you guys have owned up to part of this being your problem. And I hear a condo association sitting over here saying, please just tell us what to do and we will do it. So I think it's important at this point, instead of doing this whole, that we work together. Because I see a lot of people willing to try to fix this and, and work together to do that. So maybe you can go out, meet with the condo association, figure out, maybe there is something they can do different or that they're not seeing because you guys are the experts on that and try to come up with a plan for them. And then you can also keep the town informed about the cleanings and everything going on so that you can keep the residents in the know of what's going on. People are gonna be less mad knowing, oh, look, they're getting the tank cleaned today. That's why this is happening or this is happening. People are just looking for information. That's all. Miscommunication.
Last spring, the old superintendent, myself and the old superintendent met with the condo association. They hired a contractor to do that flushing for them. At that time, we told them, and I personally told the contractor, if you flush, you call us. We'll work with you. We'll do anything we can to help you get the problem figured out. I don't know if that's ever happened. Every time the contractor wants to get on there, they can call us up and say, yeah, we're gonna get on there next week. Not this day. Let us know. And if we can work with them, you know, a problem, work with them. We don't want people dirty water.
Right. And I think it's great that you're willing to do that and I appreciate you for that. And I'm sure they do too. And it's good that you all hear that together. So there's no miscommunication with an old superintendent or anything like that. I think, I will hope that you guys will give them a little bit of time to work with the new superintendent and pull this together and work together and make it work for everybody in the town. And I appreciate you guys coming forward and, and being the voice. And this is what we need to do if we're gonna make this town what we need it to be for our kids. So I appreciate all you.
Thank you. I appreciate everybody's time too. Thank you. And good luck with your new job.
Welcome to the town.
I would just like to say that it makes me very happy to hear a plan in place. We met at the water department before. We live over on South Street. So we've had continuous problems with all those. And the old superintendent, me, I feel like it was only our house, just like you said. And we've done the same flushing through his coaching a number of times, which it was short lived, maybe an improvement, but not long. The next day, he ran into it again, you know. So it is great to hear that they're gonna clean the tank and the filters on the two pumps.
We need to give the new superintendent a chance.
Right.
Change is good sometimes.
And I think the flushing has increased. We discovered that maybe at your meeting, the water department meeting, that there was a policy in place that wasn't being followed on the flushing. So. That's good news to hear because we would be in the dark if we didn't come.
Does anybody else have a comment? Kim, did you have another comment?
I just had a statement where we used to live at four four one Twin Lakes in the condos that you're right here with them getting together through the association and the residents there. Could be modeled after the smoke detector testing when they, association works with five departments to get the smokes and COs and to compliance and or they have outside contractors that do it. But it's very well organized and in a different frame. Both of them were done. And we used that policy when I was in Halifax Meadows between oh one and, oh, two, oh one and oh seven two. And it worked pretty efficiently. There was always enough rooms to, to the residents to get it done. And it always seemed that the town departments, the contractors and others worked really well together. I just thought it was a good idea. Maybe it could be modeled off of the already existing model of five department and others use.
Okay. Does anyone else have any comments? Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
We have three minutes.
So we've got about three minutes before our next appointment.
So Tanya Masa was in contact with Kim about the holidays in Halifax appointment. She does wish to be reappointed. Of course, we'll see how everything plays out in the next couple of months. We'll hopefully, we're going on a ventus here, but in the meantime, she would like to be reappointed.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Teneas?
Zoning Board's Appeals. Is the board ready to make any decision or make motion to appoint someone or by moving this to the August tenth?
I gotta recuse myself.
Jerry, what's your thought?
Bressari?
Zoning Board. The zoning board.
Yep.
You could, someone can nominate him. They could nominate somebody else. We'll see if there's a second and then you could make a vote. I'm sorry. Okay, so you're nominating Mr. Bressari?
Yeah.
I was going to nominate Ms. Kenyon. I feel like she has an educational background. And she would bring a lot to the table. There's a lot of stuff going on in the town. She's here for her kids. Be nice to be a mom on the board with all of her education and background in real estate and all that. I think she's very qualified to do the job.
Is there a second?
Yep. All those in favor? Aye.
Uh, surplus property. Staff recommends that the twenty fourteen Ford Explorer that have been used for inspectional services be declared surplus and sold.
Is there a motion?
I motion.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Teneas. All right. It is seven thirty. And we have a department head meeting set up. So I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. Just wanted to go around and see what's going on with all the departments. Are there any issues that have come up that are unforeseen? We have a special town meeting coming up. Is there any changes that we need to make to your budgets to deal with? Whether it's COVID related issues or other issues that have come up? I guess I'll start with the border health first. Your closest.
How is everybody? As far as people see, I think we saw the past year that we can't actually predict the unpredictable. We were able to handle it fortunately with some help from DPH. Our budget looks secure right now, but that's all dependent on what's gonna happen this fall and moving forward. We've got to repeat COVID, we've got to repeat the flu war. And the other, of the multitude of issues that happen across passing, the, the health department, right now we're safe. One federal. As for COVID itself, the town is on an increase, two point four one percent. We had been under even one percent for about a three or four week trend. Whether those numbers will take us is to be determined. And as far as state guidance, CDC guidance, well, we're gonna have to follow the same play that we did throughout the, the last time that this happened. It's, it's gonna change by day. I mean, we're gonna have to be able to move as it moves or get out in front of it. You did see me put on a mask when I was here. I'll tell you that right now, let's even say eighty percent of the population is vaccinated or has whatever reason for. I'm not seeing five percent of people wearing masks. So just not a bad prediction, but saying that masks didn't hurt. And using when they're out, you feel appropriate at whichever given time, but you feel the need to do so.
Okay. Are there enough masks for, that the border health has for every department?
That was primarily supported through the fire department. So no, what else does not?
Okay.
Also emerging cyanobacteria cases or we have none currently. That was a country DDP today. George Zotto, who's by contact with DPP, is coming out tomorrow. Just as a routine investigation of ponds, there has been an alum added to the ponds. No indication of blooms. What we're, what we have seen is normal algae, consistently in the ecosystem. But they'll be continuing their testing and following up on it. But it's always good just to keep an eye because of bloom. Usually doesn't show up first by way. It's usually up towards the middle. The next works its way in. But something that we keep an eye on religiously. And whenever I talk about the ponds, we always think about, you know, are they closed because of people contamination? Or is it cyanobacteria? But it's also all of the other things that have to do with having it found at the pond. So wildlife safety, sunburns. This happens to be a predominantly, you know, Caucasian area, highly susceptible to skin cancer. Tick, I would credit this year. I've had actually more tick bite cases than I have COVID cases in the last month. And we just had what? Almost a month worth of rain. So needless to say, mosquitoes are next on the agenda. So that's where we're hanging that way. And then when we do have a beautiful day, we can worry about the wildfires out West and bringing all the corona quality and stuff. And then I just do my normal job, which is about fifteen insectic systems and apparently no way, you know, any other complaints. But that's what the border health is today.
Okay.
I know last year was a lot for your department. I came in a couple of times and talked to you and I went to a lot of your meetings. And I just hope you know that we thank you for all you did because I know it was a lot of extra time, a lot of contact tracing, a lot of vaccine clinics and teachers and working with so many things. So it didn't go unnoticed. And I think you did a great job for our town and I just want you to know that.
Well, we appreciate that. And myself and the board do what we like to do. So we get to try to prevent, but again, lots predictable or not totally, you know. Wish I'd just had that magic ball. I could turn over and say, everything will be all right.
Okay. Chief?
So as far as the police department, things are good budgetary wise since the beginning of budget year. I'd be, if I was already in trouble, I wouldn't be, you know, working here very long. Staffing is a hundred percent fine. We got Officer Bunker, who's graduated on twenty-six. He's conducting his school training right now for the next week and a half. We'll have a small sort of in-storm on the board to kind of get their recognition because Sue's on vacation. And I just didn't feel like, you know, just having to go down there with this one and give his parents a chance to, you know, kind of be part of his, his achievements. So as far as, as budgets and staffing, with the police reform, I believe I already addressed it more than once before, a couple of times before. Everything's in a standstill uncertainty. We don't know what's gonna happen with the, this whole bridge academy and certification of police officers. But the state is mandating that every single police officer that works in a Commonwealth has the same level of training that is eight hundred hours of training, which is what the recruits receive with the gap. Our special police officers who do a great job with extra shifts, coverage, details, any, any defense and sound are lacking the hours. It's gonna be an option right now that they're, what they call the Bridge Academy, which is gonna be a hundred. They go back to school for a hundred and twenty hours, eighty hours of online training. And then the other is gonna be hands on training. I don't, I think if the specials that I currently have on staff right now, probably just one might take that Bridge Academy. So at that point, and which makes, makes it even more difficult now is I guess the state is contemplating mandating the people that want to go to Bridge Academy to submit to a PAT test, which for the recruits have to do, physical assessment test. And then also meet physical standards set by Cooper's, different standards, depending on age. And so it's gonna cause even more of a barrier for these guys to go back. This, we have to discuss who's gonna pay for them to work with Bridge Academy. Are they gonna pay their own way? Is the town gonna pay their own way? So if that happens, we have to have some serious talks, talks about increasing our staffing because there's no way we're gonna be able to maintain longer block services for the town with eleven full time officers. So that's one of the issues coming down the pipe. As far as town meeting, I have an article on the warrant to remove Halifax from civil service. It's supported by both unions. So I don't see a, a major issue. I think for the bomb in our size, it makes all the sense in the world. Civil service is gonna be a, basically a place where somebody gets a test and they're gonna create a list. That's all they're gonna, they're not gonna have any power to overturn any, any discipline because that's gonna fall within this commission now. So a five suspension, it's only five days. And the commission says, yeah, if you have a five day suspension, the officer has no option to put civil service to a theater. So we, we're handcuffed when we go, when we have civil service because it's so hard to recruit officers. They take a test, they have a list. The last civil services, we had seven applicants on our list. So if we're on civil service, we can do our own testing. We can do an assessment set up, which I think is more valuable than just a, a written test. And then we can actually do, do some legitimately, you know, recruit some, some officers into town. So I think that's a. So I think that's a, a good step forward. Um, so, uh, both, both the patrolmen and sergeant are negotiating with the board. Um, that's from what I understand, we're going well from the patrolman, our mediation and, uh, the sergeant's are about to start renegotiating. Um, some of the programs that, uh, we're going forward with, with this year is an autism awareness program where any, uh, town resident who is, uh, is an autistic child can reach out and, uh, well, provide them a, um, decal for in their home or their cars to kind of, uh, make the officer aware possibly as an autistic kid in the home, so the officer can kind of already have that mindset that I'm going to a situation where if somebody can be, you know, violent or doing to a behavior that, you know, they're not surprised by, by those type of behaviors. Um, we've partnered up with the, uh, with a liver program. So, um, the certification committee, uh, was good enough to, uh, actually reach out to some residents, businesses inside. And they've, we've got some gift certificates that the officers have on their cruises. And if they get calls or they see somebody liver busting, they'll, uh, give them a citation for, uh, ice cream cone or, uh, gift certificate for coffee, stuff like that. So, uh, so that's a good thing. Um, we have a, uh, other program with the center that's helping obtain, um, care packages to set up, uh, for children from zero to twelve to have Indiana at the station in case an officer comes in contact with a child and to kind of give him some, that child some comfort, we'll have some, some packages at the station, you know, either a toy or, uh, some food, candy, you know, whatever. She's setting, setting that all up to have a stationary man, uh, for, uh, when we do the economies of these children. Um, we're continuing to work towards certification. Um, most of the regulations have, uh, been issued out to all the officers. They've signed off on it and, uh, continuing to work on policies. We have a new insurance that's helping with that. Uh, my goal is to hopefully by the end of this year, beginning of next year, call the state for an assessment of the, uh, our, our policies, our facilities, our equipment to see if we can get certification by the state. That will, uh, decrease our insurance for media, we'll get a discount. It'll show transparency to, to the residents that, you know, we're, uh, a department that prides itself in professionalism. By reviewing our policies, making sure our laws are, uh, meeting the, uh, the national standards. So, uh,
Okay.
Uh, I think that's about it.
Alright, thank you.
I don't want to be all.
I remember last year during COVID, um, there was a problem with child services actually not responding when you did have children that needed the services because of COVID. So I'll do some follow-up to see if those, uh, are in place. Because not only should you have something at the state, you have to know if anybody has to.
Somebody on my, exactly.
Okay. Um, Principal Bogart?
Sure, thank you. Um, actually, this, the school is actually kind of quiet for once.
Summertime.
It's, uh, it was a long year, COVID and everything, but, uh, glad to say that our custodians are getting a chance to kind of do a deep clean on the building and get everything set up. So we have our new head custodian, we have Bob Lance, he's done a great job. We've got all the classrooms, they're all set, ready to go. They've been stripped and waxed and cleaned up and the classrooms are set. Right now, we're just working on getting the hallways kind of cleaned up and stripped from the wax there. Uh, and then we're doing odd, odd jobs here and there to just get things going. And then we have several projects that are going on. The kitchen floor is currently being done right now as we speak. They stripped it today. They seem like they're gonna take a couple of days to strip it all down and then install the new floor and get all the equipment back in there. Then after that, the parking lot has been resealed, as you can tell, it's been resealed and striped. Uh, and after the kitchen floor goes in, then they're also gonna do the kindergarten hallway and then the second floor out back, uh, after that. It's, that's gonna save us a lot of time because they're putting in the new floors. It's not the tile that we typically put in, it's, we have to strip and wax and it's gonna be super durable. So we're excited to get that part in there, those two areas in particular. And the other two big jobs that we have going on are gonna be the AC units that's going into the tech lab that's in the peach hallway and hold, hopefully holds our tech class itself, but then it also holds our network, uh, system that's in there. So that'll be a great addition to have that there. And then we're also putting AC into the harbor, which is right, kind of like definitely from the hallway there. And then I believe we're still waiting on the, I don't know what we're calling it, pedestrian path of the access road or the perimeter of the building, so that's the worst. Well, those are some of the big projects that are going on. Gym floors, now that Dixiel has finished up with basketball programs, the gym floor is set and ready to be refinished, uh, this week or next week. And we're looking, the other big job that we're looking at is the kindergarten playground. Needs some love and some TLC, a lot of weeds and things growing on there. Talked to Scott and see if they were, that's kind of helped out. Some of the issues over there is basically the sand and just kind of doing a redo, so we're looking at that.
Is that the playground up here or the one, the, the one down at the bottom?
The one up here, right? That's connected, closest to you.
Yeah.
So it's, yeah, there's a lot of, needs a lot of work. And the structure is more than updated that's in there, so we're looking to see what we can do. At least for the time being, maybe get some of, some of the sand out, clean it up with that. Uh, we talked to some companies that had, had helped us with the other playground and all the structures, but maybe they can, um, get something there.
Now, is the plan to eventually go fully AC into the schools or is that not the way it goes?
It's, I'm sorry, say it again.
Is the plan to go fully, like centrally into the school, like just kind of adding it in and go along?
Uh, is that a costly? The, right now, we're trying to be strategic in, in the areas that we use it. Um, right now, we only have the music room. Um, the main office is central there and then we just figured in the.
Cafeteria.
Lab that's in the library, it's just that it holds like a major components for our network. Uh, if we could, it would be ideal, but if, that would be a massive undertaking.
Which is more for curiosity, I, you know, I, I wasn't sure, I mean, it's been forty years since I've entered school in there, but I didn't know, you know, how uncomfortable it gets during, you know, hot days kind of thing in the building.
The second floor up in the back, it, it gets pretty rough. Um, it's, so that's how it is our fifth and sixth grade classrooms. And as heat rises, I mean, we've, we've installed, um, hair fans that are in there and.
The windows are all, uh, windows are open, right?
The windows are open, they're, I knew, the insulation and everything, but still, it does get pretty hot up there. So I think if we were to look into continuing to put in central air, it would be up in those fifth and sixth grade classrooms in back. Whether there's mini splits or something, but that would probably be the next direction I'd be going. Or I don't even know if the gym needs, we looked at, those are big spaces there.
Thank you.
Um, staffing wise, I guess we are still putting the final touches on a kindergarten teacher and I think we have two paraprofessional things that came on late in the year, so those are the ones that we're trying to put off. And we have no idea what, uh, the restrictions or the guideline will be for, for the fall. Uh, we just kind of see, the Boston public just said that they were, they were putting mask mandates in, but, uh, it's okay. We need to see what that, the fall holds for our, our students.
Okay. Anybody else have questions about?
When's the first day of school?
Uh, it is September first for kids one through six. And then the following Wednesday will be kindergarten.
Oh, that I asked, that was like August twenty-fifth.
So teachers will come those first two days, like, uh, thirty eighth and third first, and then that Wednesday is when students start.
Okay. Mr. Chabon?
Okay, um, as far as dietary issues, um, the assessive office will be able to level fund and not anticipate any additional requirements for equipment. So there shouldn't be a problem with funding for, uh, the general budget. Uh, let's see, we have, um, five ATB cases that are gonna be, um, that are open right now. We're having to be this Thursday and, and, um, I'll, I'll be making a motion to request that, um, uh, the legal department join us in the meeting in the future to discuss, um, a cost analysis of, you know, what, what the cost of the litigation will be versus what the recovery would be. Uh, we have, um, about the highest exposure is on, it's for a case that's to do with the solo field. And it was approximately a hundred eighty-three thousand dollars that we could recover from the ATB case. We want to calculate how much, how much that might cost the, uh, legal department to, uh, to make, you know, some decisions. So if we can, uh, um, do that for all the other ones as well, uh, I think that'll give us a good, good idea as to how much, um, recovery we might, um, be exposed to. The total amount is probably in the range of, um, one and a half million dollars with the, um, cases for, there's two cases for Walmart. Uh, there's one for, um, mid, middle, uh, this is a small amount and the other one goes to National Security.
Okay.
That's the ATB cases. We are preparing the evaluation, the, uh, re-graduation. It's ongoing. We have, just checking the phone. So the, um, document, documentation of residential, commercial, industrial and personal property have been sent to the DOR, uh, for approval. Once that is, um, done, we, um, will be able to set the tax rate. And our DOR advisor is completed and able to review and review the commercial industrial property. So, um, once, once we're able to do that, then we'll have a public hearing for the, um, information attack, the new tax, tax rate. And then we'll have a classification hearing, um, so we have that.
Okay. Mr. Here we?
Uh, as for personnel, I'm gonna be losing one person for two days, will be the recycle person. I have for two days on Thursday or Friday that person who doesn't want to work for highway anymore. So they're gonna be just doing, the recycling center for three days. And it's kind of saving us money on the Saturday because no one else is gonna have to pay overtime. They're gonna be, uh, she, that person's gonna be working that position at straight time. So that kind of helps us there, but that's for the highway, which puts us down that normal person for two days. Uh, mechanic is, his last day is this Friday. Uh, we still don't have a job description because we're trying to figure out how to go about getting the right kind of mechanic at the time we're gonna be afforded. Um, with all the computers and the motors and everything, the person has to have that skill. But the town's not gonna be able to afford to buy all the equipment that we need to do the work it costs. And after talking to some of the other towns, there's two towns that don't even have a mechanic anymore. The others, the focus wise, cushioned and I think it was Douglas, they didn't, they don't have a mechanic at all. But we have a couple of people in our place that are mechanic and a client. So I can have them, until we do get a mechanic, do the, try to make some of vehicles oil changes and stuff like that. And just like we've been doing now, mechanic can work on some of the things, they have to send it out, so that's what we're staying the same.
So like the, the other town vehicles that were being serviced there, they're gonna have?
Most of them will do some of the oil change, but the, the firearm we can work on those unless they're certified anyway.
Okay.
And that's another cost, if you want to get a mechanic certified, we're working on the firearms.
So, so you're down the mechanic and two days?
Do you have the time for your position?
No, I have the job description, I have changed the whole job description because other towns, you start a mechanic off at thirty-seven dollars an hour. At Spout Off, it's twenty-five for mechanic. So, I'm not gonna get too many applicants right there today. So that's why I'm trying to do a job description that will fit the page.
Steve, what are the other towns that you were just talking about, do, the ones that have decided not to take on a mechanic?
They just don't, they, they, they're the same situation we are.
So do they not want to take one on or they just can't find one?
No, they didn't even bother trying to go for one. They're just doing their in-house, what they can, and the rest gets sent out.
What would that do to our budget if we didn't hire a mechanic and we went with that route?
Well, I'm willing to, you know, find a mechanic, but we're gonna have to find somebody that is willing to take the pain we have. So we will have a mechanic sometime, I want, at least for the next month, that, that done and filled. But we will not be able to afford a Class A mechanic, say that can work on all the, uh, computers or back the time of our pay for all machines and all these tools we need to work on the trucks. So that's why I'm trying to get a person to come in that will be able to work on just the basic stuff in a fabric. Because we definitely need a fabricator because of the storms. Something breaks, we need to fix it, to get it back on the road and then you fix it the right way after the storm is over. So that's a, a big thing we need is a fabricator possible.
So you want that one person to be able to do both of those things or?
Yeah, that's, that's, most, most mechanics are capable, they can do some fabrication. But the way I'm looking at it, I'm either gonna get a kid out of school or somebody get ready to retire.
Does it need to be a full-time position?
A mechanic?
Yeah.
Yes.
So you couldn't do like lesser hours and give them more money to get a better mechanic?
I mean, you could, but what you're doing that, right, well, you could do it any other day and stuff like that.
Well, not necessarily every day, I'm just saying, is there other options? I mean, we're in a tough spot all around right now that everybody's hiring, a lot of people don't want to work. So I guess I'm just wondering if there's any other alternatives so that you don't get put in a situation where you have nobody for?
There's mold units out there, if you can call, but it's all a bad time. So if units something break right now, you're gonna have to wait a day or two till they come up. But if you get lucky, they will come right up. So that's, that's just what I've been trying to figure out, which way I'm gonna go with a mechanic.
Thank you for looking at all the options, I appreciate that.
And then as for budget, I guess, um, budget.
We're gonna need another meeting for this one, no? A little behind.
I, I do have money now for High Street Bridge, that stays at, the person is saying, I have the money to wait for that.
Okay.
And I have money that I'm gonna be doing some preventative maintenance this year and some trial squads on the river, wood and hay. But, you know, she knows how to, the visitor.
Yep. So we were talking earlier before you got here about the going to town meeting with that fund we were talking about for getting another line item.
For the track safety?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, I think Charlie, you're gonna re, reach it back up to him?
I'll talk again to Steve to figure out what the, what issues that's gonna cover, what projects that's gonna, it's gonna cover and how much money we might?
Yeah, it's a big thing.
So, and I told Charlie that I think the intention is to try to get it in September, not wait, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It will help.
I agree, I was just following up with you. Okay.
And that's what I mean, other than the cemetery, the cremation garden is, we've actually had two services there now. We've sold a total of seven for the garden, and the new section F is opened up now, and we have one area in that.
Okay.
And the old section is basically void.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Jean?
They have these, I think it's a good idea, and we'll continue to do this. Interesting to do, I don't have anything as interesting as the people before me. But the library's doing well, we're busy, we made some adjustments to our summer reading program, and that's all going well. Doing most of our programming outside, some of it come inside, but the most part, things are outside. Things are going very well this year, people are happy to be back into the library, and we're busy. I am down one position, a thirty-five hour a week surf position, some of that is me, just so much going on. I'm in the middle of writing a strategic plan, a five-year strategic plan, and there was just a lot of other things going on. I had to hire a tech person, so I didn't want to put too much on me. So I waited, and I think probably in September I'll go out and try and find a surf person. I only had two people apply for a twenty-five hour a week technology position. I think I'm very lucky to find a local person, she's from Hampton, and she's working out very well. So I thought September was a bad time to go and try and find somebody to fill that position. I, the library did receive a, it's called a Mind and the Making Grant from the Mass Board of Library Commissions. It's an Ellis T A grant, the contract's going to come out to me in August, and then I bring it to the board. You guys have to sign that, Sandy told me. It's for nine thousand three hundred and I think fifty-eight dollars. And the whole point of it is we're going to design three new spaces in the library. The toy room, which will be really designed for social, emotional development, getting younger kids, like say from zero to three, into the toy room where they learn how to, you know, dramatic play and socialization and all that social, emotional development. So it includes like a whole overhaul of like all the toys that we had to throw away. And we get all new toys and a whole rearranging of the space there. In the children's room, where we have a table there just coloring and a lot of tutoring goes on there, we're going to have a quiet space where caregivers and or parents can come and just sit with their children and read. It's collection development to be more inclusive in the development, in the collection that we have. That was a big part of the grant. And we're going to create a school readiness, like an exploration station, I think we called it, with STEM materials and maps and drawings and tracing, and I'm sort of excited about that. It was a big undertaking, it was a lot harder than I thought. But that's all, that's all, things are going well, the AC is working great, thank God for summer and a long time, but my AC's been working well.
Good.
Nothing exciting happening with the children, the office cash flow is good. Just reading a word from your board to set up recycling mills, tax rate will be set, we'll get those out, money comes in, bills need to be paid.
Okay.
Really about it.
And we have that, you have the August tenth meeting with recycling coordinator?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Pam. Sandy?
It's the probably busiest town of the year for me, for quoting FY twenty-one, and we're starting up FY twenty-two. We are, we're doing well, getting all the bills in, I think we've funded the last of the FY twenty-one bills, getting invoices through. We, we've got budget statuses for the end of the year out. So if you're getting budget statuses, please make sure you look at them, try to balance them to make sure our figures agree with your figures so that we can do that according to state. Other than that, I also, we have a technical planning committee, we did have our very first technical planning meeting. I think it went really well. We're trying to get together a plan when we get as much information as possible on all the articles that people work on town meeting. And we'd be able to present them to the finance and hopefully select them together so that we can have as much information as possible ready for town meeting.
Good.
And just the special town meeting coming up, just, we work under the levy limit for the town meeting on the spending. Hopefully, we won't have to put too much on the town, on the special town meeting. We'll be able to remain under the levy limit because obviously we can't set the tax rate until that, the special town meeting goes through. And then once we know the final statement that's forward to town meeting, then we can set the tax rate. That's all.
Are you going to be able to get the projector and everything set up like you thought you were going to try to do for town meeting?
Not, not, we'll talk with Caesar and Charlie about trying to do that.
Caesar?
Maybe, yes, I'm going to do it by the.
I just?
So maybe yes, is what we're shooting for.
I think we can talk about that at the August meeting, see what he has available, what's available at the school.
Yeah.
I think it would just be really different subjects, but to have up the article that we're actually talking about would be.
I think we can talk about it in August, but I just want to put it out there now, so Caesar hears it, Charlie hears it, you hear it. Part of what Sandy and I and the, what we talked about at that meeting was that I feel like a lot of the issues we're having at town meeting is a lack of communication or not presenting the warrants correctly, not giving the townspeople the information that they're looking for. And then when we don't have answers to questions, reasonable questions, the residents send, they second guess us. So I think it's important that all of us in this room really work together to be able to work for the residents. If anybody has an issue with public speaking or having a problem with presenting, or you want to throw it off of each other, hey, does this sound right? I think it's important for all of us to know what we're talking about because people in this town are going to come to you and say, hey, I saw this article, do you know about it? And when all of us turn our head and say, oh, I have no idea, or I didn't even read that, or I don't know, you'll have to wait for town meeting, it doesn't look like we're working together in here, and we're supposed to work together in this building for everybody out there. So I think that's really important, and I appreciate all of you being here tonight, and I think this is great, and we should definitely do this more because it keeps all of you in the know of what's going on with everybody else in this building too.
Okay. Anything else, Sandy?
No.
Darlene?
I have one more thing.
Oh.
I don't know if you saw, it's all been here, but I don't know if you heard, our fire governor system who has a failure, I think it's all up there. Scott moved it two or three times for me to get, and come to find out, one of them is filling up the water, so move this thing. So now we have a problem in the back, well, you saw the back of the car anyway, now, now see, so.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't know that.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's my agenda that I put together, just briefly to discuss some kind of rules on here, I apologize. But pretty much to talk about COVID and all of this.
No, no problem.
But it's been an overview of what I wanted to discuss. But we had a great opening, it opened our senior center open June twenty eighth. Everybody was pretty excited about the opening, to the point where it was difficult to come up and retain the excitement and, you know, in a safe way. And I just talked a lot about some of the issues that did come up with regard to mask wearing in a compliant environment. And that's a little bit, was a little bit cumbersome actually, to just make sure that, you know, that people did enter the building, they knew that the safeguards are, they knew that the CDC rules are, they knew everything's posted on the doors as to the properness of mask wearing in a small environment. So the reopening turned out pretty well, and now they're looking forward to our activities, which is a great thing. We did rebrand a bit, and they, you know, I had the help of Caesar, you know, to think about that. And only because of the fact that I think that we need a new fresh approach so that we can actually reach out to not only the senior community, but also to their caregivers and to let them know that we're out there, to let them know that we, we have a number of resources that are out to be brought up for the executive office of the community, as well as, you know, the Massachusetts Council on Aging, Vivida for support, and, you know, O C P C, which is O C P C, which is O C P C, which is there. So there's a lot of different agencies that are out there that we need to remember that we have them there. And, you know, to bring them to the community, to bring them to, you know, our senior members, and just to let them know that we're a vibrant organization and a vibrant, you know, building and support system. The barrier of opening in the limited space, of course, that needs to say, it's difficult to retain people, to keep them with the mask on. In fact, they don't have to do that in a fifty-five year old community. So that's one of the major issues that I've confronted with. And, you know, staff is a little bit more concerned with it than myself, of course, I've been dealing with the openness of, since the inception of the COVID. I still saw people with the mask on gloves during the day, the first day, March sixteenth, twenty twenty, when the whole epidemic, you know, epidemic started. So, you know, people still have needs, and it can go away, so we need to support that. So, you know, I'm trying to work with that, particularly issue with regard to the keeping the environment, you know, the seniors safe, that community care, or anybody that enters that building, as well as the staff. So there's a little bit, we need support, we need wonderful. I thought of a way of possibility that maybe perhaps we, as a, we want to protect contracts in terms of how we're going about protecting. So I thought about a way of possibility that people may have to sign if they do enter. But that's something we look at, as we work. Strategies for the best way to approach new programs, you know, we are coming up with a lot of different strategies, a lot of different programs. But of course, we're limited as to how we're going to approach with regard to the mask wearing. And we're going to go with a variant, we don't know. So we're going to remain positive, go forward. And, you know, we want to make sure that when we do hold social events, that we are able to do them outside, because there'll be a larger crowd. So we want to make sure that we do support any kind of events that we do have, so employ slow. And then also people, some members have asked, why are we going so slow? But we have to do, you know, I mean, we're just opening, we're in a position just four weeks. So, you know, I've been confronted with a lot of different, different aspects of the COA. So I'm learning as I go along, and I'm thankful to Sandy and also Sue Wallace for their support. It's been really, very, um, helpful in a lot of ways, of course, we're functioning as well. So as I was saying, that we are limited in our spacing, so I would say that we get out there, should look at other ways or to hold certain programs, you know, to places where we could do it safely, spacing and everything else. I went to a chair, it was pretty actually good, it was great, and it helped my back too. So, and then to encourage more of that, maybe by way of putting that out there, we're still working on a webpage, so I got a lot to work on that, so we'll get it, get it. It's, it's going to be, it's going to be very seated, hopefully. So, you know, maybe some podcasts, I'm looking at the option for that, so people press a button and listen, you know, for people that don't want to read that information. So just to see, just to keep up to date is what's happening out there, just to let them know that we are supporting all the caregivers and most everybody in the community, as well as the senior members, of course. So it's a slow progress, I call it slow progress. I just don't know, but, you know, we're just, you know, playing the best we can out of the circumstances. And I know we're going to make, we're going to look forward with a lot of good results. And I just now ask for the people's support, as I said, we're all together. And the second page, which shows us on, I think we're all over, and we are all together, and yeah, good, good luck. So, and we're basically providing those in all the ways, and we just really rebuilt, and it'll be more.
Thank you very much.
Caesar?
So last week, we started the forty hours a week for my position. We started off pretty much fine. We were able to get our new email security and our encryption system eliminated, set up. I just had to flip the switch to turn on, make changes on one of our other external systems over into that next week. Just waiting for air availability to make sure that air available in case of issues come up. We've also started to implement our backup solution for our servers as well as dedicated work stations across the town. Right now, the only servers that are actively being backed up with full disaster recovery are alone located in the town hall. The fuel management system is hardly not being backed up to disaster recovery standards. The simple fact that the solution we had before had an appliance in our server room that had it connected to. And for the sake of not affecting, they're abandoning that facility and the calls that they get, because it's all the tier base, I opted out not to have that traffic group to kind of make sure they're able to print and access their files, access their command and whatnot. So with this new solution, we'll be able to back everything up one hundred percent because we're not relying on a box inside a building, and we're going to be utilizing other cloud service providers to still provide that disaster recovery ability to the town. So we will have physical on-premise backups, we will have cloud backups, and we'll have pretty much a hybrid as well. We're going to have three different scenarios. We are still working on our cable project, right now the only building that has done to do this town hall, to my standards, not really. But we, if the company did not work out the greatest, I'm currently in the process of trying to cancel that contract with them. I believe the, that new decision is pretty much usual with us now, I haven't even heard from them. COVID did not help with, you know, getting it back up and running, obviously we didn't want to bring people inside the building to, you know, do work with staff, so that was our goal. Scott and I are working together to rebuild the spoken work and how we could possibly try to reduce the cost and our procurement requirements by utilizing staff within the means of wanting to do some maybe heavy lifting that the vendor wouldn't have to do. So that's still in the works right now, we've actually pretty much almost finished the library, the planning, I just have. I just have to figure out the floor plan, send it over to him for his final sign off and then um move on to it with the department next and figure out that soul work. Right now, we're looking at doing each project separately as opposed to what we did back in twenty eighteen and how we proposed it, which was a full, full on project here, the buildings, here, what, you know, each one's gonna get. We're trying to treat each one separately now because every building has its differences and its, you know, structural deficiencies, which you might call them. So that's a status quo. The phone system has been fully implemented, our new phone system running on our cloud provider, the phone eight, that has been fully implemented to all departments. We still have a rising handling of our uh, still handling our long lines, elevator lines, fax lines. We're hoping to implement our efax system within the next few months. We're just waiting for our um new copy machines to come in for the police department. And once that, uh, once both copiers are there, we'll be able to start the efax transition, getting them off the horizon, moving them over to a more cost effective digital solution, but still fax concept. We actually just installed one of the copy machines at the police department and that was not like we guessed it. So I don't know how that's working out, but um I hear that it's working well.
So Caesar, I guess the biggest issue that we've had from COVID, at least in the town hall, has been the ability to Zoom or Google Meet multiple computers or devices and the phone system working at the same time. I know that you installed a um five G device. Tonight, I've gone unstable a few times, I don't know if Charlie has.
Once in a while.
Can we reach back out to Comcast and and talk about having two game modems so that we can upgrade the, Sandy?
Yeah, just wondering if we could do anything so that the phone system doesn't break down as much as it does. I did a lot of hassle with phone, there's a lot of times that I'm having an issue actually in skinning people. So I mean, if it's something we have to do as far as beefing up whatever on Comcast guys.
The problem with Comcast is they don't have gigging it, gigabit upload for us. So, so we can download, fine. But in order to have two-way communication, you have to have the upload and that's really been the issue with this many users in the building.
Yeah, because like this is when we always have a problem with my computer, watching my computer home and you find out.
So I, I think that, I know you tried the five G service, but I think maybe we need to add another cable modem, even if it costs us whatever for the year. Even if it works, great. If it doesn't, we need to work with an outside vendor to figure out what's going on.
So I'm aware of the Zoom issues and unfortunately, there's nothing that I can do without doing the proper research. I understand the narval audio is an issue, I'd say it's not effective. Uh, we put in that five G modem, it improved it quite a bit.
But you didn't.
We put it in. I can't remember the exact date.
Well, it was recent, we did have a two weeks ago.
No, 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 it's not. It did, it improved for the most part. Um, and what we, what we pretty much ended doing is using our bandwidth for Comcast as well as our bandwidth for our cell carrier. They're working there.
Um, two things, you mentioned that your forty hour week starting this week? Oh.
Well, last.
All right, so we didn't get notification in the accountants and the treasurer's office yet, so we need this left wing to notify us?
Okay, so you voted two weeks, two weeks ago, you voted two.
Well, you need, you need to have the money.
We need to scan this so that the accountants office can see this lead.
And the AR money.
So, uh, but also I don't, Caesar, you talked about the computer advisor unit.
Yes.
What is that for this town?
So I selflessly made work of Pam to Pam, hoping that this week, it is on my desk, I just had to drop a letter to Pam to get that started, but hoping that the beginning of August, we'll be able to, say, sometime in August, we'll be able to sit down and start talking about certain projects and issues. The, the town issue is one very, very rare. I go through the same stuff that everyone else does. And I know the board just voted, we are going to upgrade our AV equipment and part of that is looking at the damage to support the higher readings and as well as all the other issues that are going on. The more, the, the situation really is, um Comcast, we have their highest plan and the upload speed is also capital at, I'll give you my number, thirty five.
And a hundred percent.
To give you some perspective, is, is that the, the upload speeds are very, very, they have upload speeds are very, very, very low and there's nothing more that we can do to surpass that. I'm looking at kind of options like um costly but long term.
Why is there nothing you can do about that?
Because I have control Comcast, they, they don't, that's.
So they decide how much upload speed they're gonna have.
They decide what is, and the max they sell is.
Oh, they decide what they sell?
Yeah.
Or is there a difference between cable versus FiOS, you know?
So we, we don't have FiOS in town, because if we did, then we probably wouldn't have the issue.
I, 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 I tried on the FiOS to see if I could get a lot of load split in the town.
Well, because I experienced several issues, you know, in my home actually, and it was that I lost service all the time. And it was because of the fact that there were so many people um looking from home and they were uploading and streaming. So then it just, my, it was the first house in, I lost connection all the time because it just, it just ruled to the other neighbors that were website developers and they, so I, I went through the whole thing. What they did do is move, put Russo on, I don't know if we actually had that.
And a lot of the issue is there's still so, a lot of people working from home.
Yeah, well, that's another.
And our, our Comcast lines, the, the lines of the internet, those are shared business ones. We're not, that's not a dedicated.
No, it's not.
Service coming to our building going back to Comcast. That circuit's being broken off into maybe six, seven, ten, twenty, twenty-five businesses using that same circuit, which yes, we have X amount of upload and download speeds, but the fine point is that we don't actually get that.
But when you have a cloud.
There's no guarantee.
When you have a cloud highway, you're gonna have slow.
Yeah.
Internet.
And that's.
Basically, they'll describe it and you're gonna have everybody jumping on and streaming and everybody is home, you are gonna have down slower internet.
Yeah, and, and it's really just down to the situation. I've, I've looked at fiber with the dedicated ethernet, dedicated um, you know, any type of dedicated internet, the cost is very excessive.
Well, we can look, we should look at Knet again, even though we know that's gonna be more expensive, but the, so if the difference is we spend money or we don't, or we don't have, we have lousy service and maybe spending money even with Knet.
Yeah, we, I looked at several different fiber options. I actually have a meeting with someone, I believe, next week on some other fiber weapon pulled in in our area and looking at cost to get that and send it out. But it is working and costs, you know, products. In addition to the number of other issues that I have to deal with on a daily basis, it's just a matter of trying to find the right time to, you know, answer a phone call fixed issue and get on immediately.
Is this issue connected to the problem, say, we settled with our phone, like when too many people are random? Because I'm having to go out on my phone, I'm getting a lot of wrong numbers though, which is really.
Like people that.
We get a lot of.
Yeah, no, not like just people thinking they're calling somebody like random and actually a couple of other times.
I used to get a lot of hits and people.
Yeah, I would say fire about on, you get a lot of fire, can you put a fire on?
So I think that for the next meeting, we'd ask you to present some solutions with some costs so we can fix the issue.
You're looking at me?
Yep. Whether it's another Comcast modem.
I don't think there's anybody.
I don't know, I can't see, I can't see it done here, I didn't know what you're talking about, who knows?
All right.
That being said though, Caesar, I know that you were, just had your hours bumped up and I know you were handed a lot during the pandemic trying to get everybody remote and computers and Zoom meetings and all that, so I think you did a good job.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Caesar, do you think you should talk about that the library is not gonna be done?
Yep, so.
And what that means as far as like the, your workload?
Yep, uh, at its July, I think it was July, early, yeah. Um, the Board of Trust Beasts had voted to hand over all IT um responsibilities to the Town Management Department versus having their technology librarian be responsible for, due to preceding services. So that's um now additional facility added to my scope with all their devices. And we will have done, open have um, maybe put an article in at the next annual committee to get the appropriate equipment to get them tied to the town network. About this may be doing that this fall. We just signed up on a contract to continue the um IT services through the sales network, which is their regional library network. So we're not doing anything specifically aside from the A, the initial lobby. And we're also starting the email migration for the libraries, so they're looking over to the town's email system as opposed to being on the sale one, and that will be starting uh sometime next week.
Yes, so sales doesn't back up their email, which was one of the problems. Um, and then, so nothing gets backed up, so now everything will be backed up, the, the website and all of our own, um, you know, everything that goes on, everybody's personal computer will be backed up.
Yep.
Through the town, but do we have to be on this network to do that or no? I get so confused.
Yes.
So we're not gonna be all backed up until?
No, no, we're, there, there's a library, we're installing that page on our machines until that happens.
Oh, I see.
So a lot of backups, and then once we make that transition to the town network side, you'll, you'll be, we're using the pure like Sandy or Cam or Darlene or myself.
Well, I think it's important that you do that, but um, you know, and I think it's important that the library go onto the town, like be responsible for all of the backup, obviously, but honestly, what does that do to your time constraints and your time? How much extra work is that, or how much work is that not extra, but?
It's really hard to say, it's really all dependent on issues that come up. Obviously, the planning of it takes time, that's usually one off the, um, and the implementation one time, but that's usually like it says, if you do it once, it's usually said, forget it and take it after that.
So I think that we probably could have just an IT meeting for everybody, maybe next week or the following week with you, going through what the issues are that, that everyone's facing and where we are on, on your list of those items to move forward. So.
I, I know there are a lot of issues and I, you know, appreciate your conversations. It's, you know, handling a lot of job, so I, you know, I appreciate your conversations and understanding it does take time. I wish I could do things with a sound of a finger, but I'm not a magician. Wish us.
Thank you, Caesar. Okay, Mr. Lindsay? Anything else? Nothing else? Mr. Durensis? Welcome.
Hi, I'm Paul Durensis of the Lipton House. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too.
Okay, Charlie?
Um, a couple of questions came up during the last couple of weeks that I thought were relevant for the meeting. Um, I don't think anybody's expecting, for instance, a decision tonight about AR money, but I think the staff would like to get a better idea of what the board's considering in terms of the use of the AR money. Um, and, and not necessarily a timetable in the sense of it's gonna be two weeks from now, but more general idea, what's the board's, what steps the board's going to take towards making those types of decisions? Because we have the various uses for the money which are allowed under AR. For instance, um, we have the infrastructure for water, for sewer, for broadband, broadband especially, there's some law limitations on that. We have COVID related, um, we have replacement of services or money that can be spent facing on anything because of revenue laws. We also, for instance, have the ability to provide award money to employees here, but actually my reading of it also is employees outside of the town government in that with more an emphasis on lower paid employees than higher paid, but you know, there are ways of dealing with all those situations. But I, but I think I've been asked about what's the board's direction, what are they thinking about doing and when, you know, what are the steps they're gonna be taking to get to a decision point about those items?
So I know for me, adding hours to the IT specialist was important because of all the issues we had and I think we have that money available and we should just do that as soon as possible, so that's why we voted, or at least that's why I voted the way I did a few weeks ago. Infrastructure, I'm hoping that if the water department comes up with some sort of solution working with the engineering company and money's needed to upgrade things, we have a sum of money to upgrade those issues. So they're working with the engineering firm, if you come up with problems that you can implement solutions and we have money available, I think that's where I would be looking to spend a majority of the money for infrastructure. I don't know what the other.
I, I feel the same way, we've gotta get the foundation, shore it up, so that in the future, we look a little better there. But when is the money gonna be made available?
Well, we already have, I believe, Sandy, about what, four twenty-five K came in, first check, yeah, and we'll be getting another four hundred and twenty-five a year from now. The county money's gonna be a little more complicated, um, having, I went to a, a meeting, Zoom meeting a couple of weeks ago that the county commissioners and the county treasurer held, they are going to take responsibility for the money coming through the county. Um, it won't be a reimbursement system, but what they're going to, the way I heard the room is that they will be saying to a town, make a request for money, but we're gonna make a decision whether in fact that's eligible activity or not. So I don't, I believe, I have to check with the county treasurer whether they've gotten the money for the municipalities here in Plymouth, no, I'm sorry, Plymouth County except for Plymouth and Brockton because they're larger than fifty thousand. But there's also, I just seen an article yesterday that they may be working with Norfolk and Bristol counties about pooling money. And while they seem to have every, every statement says, well, our plan is to distribute the money based on the population, there's nothing saying yet they've made that decision actually.
Is there a time, how many, how many years have you been?
It's several years, in fact. We don't, it won't be the end of this year, um, because I believe it'll be either June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four or December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. So there's no immediacy, we don't have to spend it in the next six months, for instance, nothing like that. Okay. And that may be to our advantage, for instance, especially if we're doing infrastructure projects with the price of materials right now, um, it may, I mean, it's gonna be a balance, trying to get something done now because we need to get something done now versus can we wait a little while longer and hope that the prices of materials, for instance, go down, I mean, Steve's running into the same problem and we don't even have money. Well, the um, loss of revenue money can be used almost for anything, any government service and program. But when they said the infrastructure, it was limited to water, sewer, including storm sewer and broadband. And broadband, the way it reads is we won't, we could not do a qualified activity because Comcast does bring in to the town sufficient speeds, even though we don't like the service, they're at a sign up rate that we could not do a broadband project here in Halifax. Okay. Um, second area was, you know, the board's been dealing with a number of complaints and whether the board is thinking about formalizing the process of dealing with complaints in the sense of, um, whether, you know, certain complaints, depending on probably the type of complaint and the persons involved in the complaint, for instance. and the persons involved in the complaint, for instance, elected officials versus department heads versus members of departments versus board committee members versus even we might get complaints from town employees about people who aren't town employees in terms of abusive treatment and how the board would formalize that so that, you know, some matters might become, go to the board, some matters might automatically go to town council or to an investigative firm. And what's the intent of the board to formalize that process?
So I think that we've got a new, a new firm with Works and Durencis to reach out to to talk about what policies they can recommend, what items that we're dealing with and see if we can't work with Paul to come up with some policies to present to the board and adopt them so we can deal with some of these issues.
I'll talk to Attorney Durencis later this week then. The third area was just in terms of morale. Obviously, it's been a rough year, more than a year for a lot of people, especially the last two months have been fairly traumatic. And I think at least in this building, morale has gone down. And I've been asked in essence, what steps is the board intend to take to try and build morale back up again?
Okay. I think by having these open meetings with department heads, getting people together, understanding what everyone's going through with their issues.
I think it's important that everyone works together. I don't, I get that morale is down. I get people don't like change. I get that it's difficult in any part of life to have change. And there's been a lot of change in this town in the last couple of months. But change can be good sometimes. And I think if everybody has an open mind about things and works together, like I was saying previously, that will help the morale to help each other be successful for this town.
Thank you.
Good. Paul?
I just want to say I have a question of the part procedures. We said they are meeting tomorrow morning at nine thirty to discuss that with the town administrator. So we have some ideas. Hopefully from that meeting will come some proposals for you to look at. So it's being worked on and it should be.
Is that a meeting we should be having all together? The selectmen and you and the town administrator to talk about that? Or is it normal for you to sort it out with town administrator and then come to us?
Well, right now, we're trying to handle what all these complaints are, whether they're wrong. Just gave a list of four possible categories, but are all those categories included in the mix? So we wanted to get some more factual information.
So the first, the group that the board had received several weeks ago.
So how about you guys have that meeting and then you present some policies that you guys want to move forward?
Paul had designated someone from his firm to talk with me about this.
Okay. Okay. Before I forget, Amy, do you have an update from the planning board? Because you're here from the planning board.
Well, I wasn't prepared for it because I'm not the department head, but I can say that I feel as though we're starting to get further attention to all the biologs and we have a very good diary board with different expertise. And everybody's looking at it with good conversation and that's different, so that's fantastic. We're having good conversation and hearing each other and listening to the residents better at the meeting and making sure that their needs are met as well. So I feel like it's a good, in a good direction.
Okay, thank you. And then, before I forget, Sue has been on. Sue, do you want, do you want to give an update?
Sure. So our office has been busy with dog licenses. They're all past due now, so if they aren't paid by December fourteenth, they will be charged that fifty dollar late fee. So I used to have a lot of people that haven't done it yet. We also sent out a mask inactivation. And what that is, is for people that did not complete their census, their voter registration becomes inactive. We sent them out a postage paid postcard for them to send back. All they have to do is sign it and say they're still living in town. A lot of confusion. People thought they already did their census, but they rarely did the federal census, not the town one. The issues I'm having, I'm having a lot of issues with the time clock in the office. I've had them out to repair it four times since I started. We do have a contract with them. The problem is when it breaks, I don't have a spare. So, and it can take them a day or two to come out to fix it. So I don't know whether I should, you know, purchase another one to have as a backup, but. And then the only other thing I was thinking is I might run short for whatever's funded for payroll for Tara. If I'm going to have her assist me at town meetings or at just like we have in a special town meeting. It wasn't planned. So that's the only thing I can think of, the issue.
Okay.
All right?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Just for a second.
Yes.
I would bring to the attention, while I was doing a site visit for compliance on one sixty-three Plymouth Street, it's not in my wheelhouse, but that trailer is like on the edge of the road. And I see it as a personal safety issue or potential safety issue. And just want to let you guys know it's not in my wheelhouse. I don't know whose it is. It's right there on the edge. It's close to the road with the dog ran by this.
So that's probably more police if it's a parking issue.
It's only in the forest.
Somebody, but the rest of the place was mine. This was for somebody else.
Okay. Kim?
At future of the pack and head meeting, should someone from conservation be here also to update the board?
Yeah, I think it would be useful. They can come up after their meeting because they normally meet the same night we do, so.
Tonight's meeting was canceled, the chair canceled because of a lack of heavy agenda, but. And we lost our secretary. She resigned, so I'll email Kathy and ask her how she'd like to handle that because I can't very much do much. I was on vacation after being appointed and then Sue's on vacation this week, so.
Okay.
I can't help you guys out this evening, but I am certainly putting on a red jacket.
Okay, yeah, I think it's useful if we have these meetings once every six weeks and give everybody an update on what's going on, especially if we're going to be coordinating around town meetings, making sure we're presenting everything that needs to move forward. And I think it's important that everybody in the room is moving forward, especially when we start to talk about the senior center project and when we get those plans back from there. I think having everybody updated, knowing what's going on, is going to make the town more successful. I mean, we can still all disagree with all sorts of things, but as long as we have the same information, we can make better decisions. Okay. Is there anything else on the agenda? We need to cover? I want to thank you guys for coming tonight. Thank you.
If there's anything you need from us, let us know. We're here to help you guys.
The only thing up that we have next is executive session?
No, we have signature authority.
We have signature authority, time of year.
Okay.
And then Gordon, there are various actions you need to take about the building inspector.
All right, so. So if it's about the building inspector, I could recuse myself.
What do you need to sign this one? First one's Gordon.
Yes.
This one? Oh.
I'm walking all the way. Yes. That's why I mentioned your presentation. The board assesses this Thursday. What I want to do is cost benefit analysis of the differences in term. We haven't done anything. I know, obviously, there's no. Ashley's back there someplace.
We have the decibels.
Yep, yep, yep.
But we're still getting, we just discovered this. And so.
Yep, yep.
And we're doing this. Open the file, so we're not quite in the position yet to do this.
Okay. How long, how long do you think would be before we get? Oh, amazing. So what, what, what I'm going to propose on Thursday is we say we invite, you know, invite some boss like me and you to come and, you know, do that. Don't talk, maybe late, late in August, whenever you're ready, whatever you're ready.
Compared to leaving and trying to sell stuff? And many times, you find yourself spending a million and a million can match your, your risk allowance.
Yep, yep.
But you want to establish principle, like the issue of solo sales, that's a, of course, statute has changed. Doesn't happen in the legal.
Your face hurts? It's killing me too, Troy, now I'm just kidding.
Yep, yep.
So Troy, just a little side here.
Much of this, this lot of stuff, sell stuff.
Side here.
Which you never want to go to a whole lot of time. So the issue of law, like you say. See what the court's going after.
Yep.
Kind of something really true. Doesn't matter. So we want to give you that.
Yep, yep, yep.
Not the first of the five cases. Instead of two cases.
Correct, correct.
Then we have, oh, there's three. The last one, I think, is.
Because one of those are motion spaces that is kind of weird. The path of the victim. And there's an accident. We can come on to a trial. You basically. Okay. So Troy and Ashley, I need to, at least one decision, we need to deal with Rob.
Okay.
So when I, when the board better. Paul? John? John? We're going back in the meeting? Okay, sorry. I'm running camera. So on the thirteenth, the board are going to extend Rob's temporary appointment to the twentieth. Then the board took no action of twentieth. Normally, what happens is if a person leaves other than for a resignation or retirement, then a paycheck is issued to that person on their last day. In essence, that person's employment with the town has been terminated for one reason or another and we're required under state law, in fact, to supply them with their final paycheck. That wasn't done because I didn't know what the board was going to do on the twentieth, so I didn't notify the treasurer's office or the county's office of that. So I now need to, even though it's several, a week later, need to notify them. So I'm, my understanding is in fact his last day was the twentieth. I need to notify the two departments of that fact. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, good. Assistant Building Inspector, Wayne Kelly resigns as Assistant Building Inspector as of Friday, July twenty-third. Does the board wish me to start the process of hiring a new Assistant Building Inspector?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll start that work. Alternate Building Inspector, part one. With Mr. Kelly's resignation, the town does not have a Building Inspector or Assistant Building Inspector until Mr. James Perry begins his employment on Monday, August second. I was in contact with him on Monday and sent him an offer letter. He'd said yes with his intention of starting work against warning on the second. So he'll be able to do inspections starting next week. If we need any inspections done, however, this week, they have to be done by somebody else because we don't have any. I had Terry Rinaldi in the Building Inspector's office contact several retirees. What happens is that the state supplied us with a list of retired building inspectors who will provide, you know, part-time services as alternates or whatever's needed. David Tonas of East Bridgewater wrote that he would be willing to work on a two-day-a-week schedule at forty dollars per hour, for a four-hour minimum. I'm not saying we should do that infinitely, but at least for this week, I don't know whether the board wants to appoint him as an alternate Building Inspector just for this week and then I'll get to the situation with the following week. He's also qualified as a Building Commissioner, Inspector of Buildings to do the certificates of occupancy.
It would make sense for us to have someone in the position because right now we haven't got one.
Right. He's local. We're not going to get somebody from Drake, if Frank's things coming down here to do this.
Do we get a chance to do a face-to-face?
Probably not because we'll get to the second piece, I mean, starting next, for next week. But for this week, I mean, if you, if you want to have him come in, you know, he's going to actually have to come in one of these days and if people want to say hello to him, we can, but I don't have a meeting set up as a selectman's meeting.
So we'd only be using him for Wednesday?
For this week, I'm.
For Thursday and Friday, pretty much, by the time you tell them tomorrow.
Do an answer.
Yeah, just for this week and then I'll deal with the situation for starting next week.
Okay.
I need a motion, hold a second.
I am so moved to do that for the next week.
Second. In the vote?
All those in favor, bye.
Thank you. Okay, so Mr. Perry will start on August second. He's not certified as a local inspector. He'll need to do that during the next twelve months. During that time, he can do the inspections. However, he cannot do certificate of occupancy until he's certified as a Building Commissioner or Inspector of Buildings. So have twelve months to do, get the certification as a local inspector. And once he does that, he'll have eighteen months to get his certification as a Commissioner of Buildings or Building Commissioner. During the time until he's certified as the latter, we still need someone to come in and do the certificates of occupancy. I talked to Terry. She figures it's probably about one hour a month. She figures it's probably about one hour a month, not even one hour a week.